Good afternoon, Lynette.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much for accepting our invitation for this interview. Los Altos Residence is an organization of your neighbors who care deeply about the city and whose mission is to ensure that every resident's voice is heard by the city council, commissions, and the city staff. We're pleased to get this opportunity to know more about you and learn more about why you're running again for city council. I want to spend just a minute going over the ground rules of these interviews. All of the questions were sent to each candidate prior to the interview, and each candidate will be asked the same questions. We will post unedited videos of all the interviews on our website, losaltosresidence.org. Our goal is to help voters learn more about each candidate through this series of interviews during this challenging time with COVID-19 shelter in place when traditional in-person debates and small neighborhood gatherings are discouraged. All seven candidates were invited, and all seven candidates accepted Los Altos Residence's invitation to be interviewed. However, after receiving the questions, Sally Meadows and Jonathan Weinberg withdrew their acceptance and notified us they do not want to be interviewed. Now, Lynette, would you take just a minute to introduce yourself before our first question?
So, thank you again for the invitation. My name is Lynette Lieng. I am currently a city council member, and I have served as mayor in 2019. The council and I have achieved a great deal in that time. I am running for reelection because I know that we need, there's more that we can continue to do, or I would like to see continued. I have been an active community member prior to running for the council in 2016. Prior to my service on the council, I have served on Parks and Recreation, the commission, for 11 years. I have initiated the senior committee, which is now the senior commission today. I have initiated the summer concert series. I have initiated and implemented the senior program at Grand Park and continue to remain active. Unfortunately, like you said, due to COVID-19, it is on hiatus for a while. I led the adoption of the urgency ordinance to limit 5G small cell towers near schools, near residential zones, and multi-unit dwellings. And I worked with the council to increase the budget for road repairs and traffic safety. That is a major priority for the majority of our residents. As you can tell by our Godbe surveys in the past, our concerns regarding our roads have always remained a top priority. I could list more, but this, you know, it's just a brief background, and I know you have more questions for me, so I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, Lynette. Our first question is, in your role as an elected official, what are your most significant contributions to the community? I know you've just touched on a good deal of them, but what do you think are your most significant contributions?
Making sure that we continue to maintain our city services for our residents and making sure that we have a balanced budget to do so, as well as maintaining our public services and public safety. That is a high priority for me on the services that we continue to provide for our community. And I also believe that what we have done and worked together to have, to continue to do is maintain public safety and the fact of how we fund our programs, how we fund maintaining what, excuse me, let me repeat that. So getting back to what you say, is it our priorities or what I have done?
Yeah, your most significant contribution as a public official, as a council member.
Okay, my most significant contribution, I feel needing the urgency ordinance as a mayor, I have done that. And also, I think taking a position in regards to overreaching state laws. We all want to make sure that we've strived to live in a wonderful community, and we need to maintain that. We all want to make sure that our single-family residential zones continue to remain single-family residential zones. I have been very proactive in taking positions on that and working with other councils and other leaders to do so. So I think those are significant contributions. There are more, but I think that I don't want to go on and on, so.
Thank you, thank you.
I think those are major contributions, thank you.
Thank you so much. So what are your priorities and what will you do to make sure they're accomplished?
I think that I'm touched upon fiscal accountability. Fiscal accountability is so important because we need to maintain that fiscal accountability, like I said, to maintain our city services, to maintain, to ensure public safety. So that is a priority for me. I have, I also feel that making sure that we are transparent in our business, fighting for equity and accountability is important. I want to ensure that our, we have continuous review of our budget to ensure that we can have good insight over our expenses and understanding where revenue comes from. And I want to also make sure that we can continue to have good community outreach. So, public input is important throughout the whole process in just about everything we do. Making sure that our residents are aware of what we do and educating them about what we do is also important. So, we need to, once again, ensure that our income over expenses is a clear understanding for the council as well as the public.
Thank you. Well, that segues beautifully into the next question. When financial demands of Los Altos exceed the available and projected public funds, what factors would you consider when you're allocating those funds to the competing demands?
It's always important to maintain, keep mindful of council priorities, understanding that we have all made these decisions together, what our council priorities are. So, having that said, I know that there are things that come before us that may ask for, or organizations that feel that funds are needed. And there are times where good reasons come forward, as you can see, like our small businesses, Western dire need of assistance. But we also understand that are, there are competing interests involved. But keeping mindful of our priorities is what's going to keep you in track, keep you on track when we have to make sure we have the funds. So, once again, clear understanding of our budget and revenue sources to that, so that we can safely move forward. Because what, what's going to happen is, we already know that the city's going to be taking on a large loan, we're going to be in the red. And so, we really have to understand if we're going to move forward on something, we have to understand there are going to be some takeaways. So analyzing these things with the mindful knowledge of what, how it impacts our community is really important.
Okay, so Lynette, you just touched on the loan. Those, there are financial instruments available for cities to raise funds without prior voter approval. And what's your position on having Los Altos use this type of financing? And if you would vote for the council to do so, please describe one or two instances where you feel it would be appropriate.
Well, there's tools that we can, as a city, utilize to seek funding. As you know, there's, we have taken on a loan. We have to be cognizant about the amount of the loan and making sure we can pay that back. And we also have implemented some fees. I would like to understand that when we take that direction, we, we have to understand or, excuse me, my dog is barking and I didn't want him to interrupt our meeting, so hang on one second. Sorry. So there's the loan, and we can do that, but we don't want to overextend ourselves. Many cities have gotten in trouble by overextending themselves, and we got to be very careful of doing that. There are also other tools such as public-private partnerships. The good examples of, for all opportunities where organizations provide donations. And when we take on donations, we have to make sure that there are no strings attached. Hopefully, I would like to make sure that there are no quid pro quo situations and also understanding that it is the council's decision to make the decision on the best interest of the city and their residents.
Okay. Let's move to local zoning issue, question. Do you believe the current building codes for the various zones, commercial, residential, mixed, commercial, neighborhood, especially those relating to building height and density, are appropriate for Los Altos?
Our current building codes is on, and the problem is, it is very difficult for us to follow that and adhere to that because of state laws that have been introduced and that impact our, how we implement our zoning codes. And because of that, it has become problematic. The addition of the state laws make it so it, it many feel it's not appropriate for Los Altos. And that is why now we are working on objective standards on how to address some of the changes that's occurring and how we want to continue to maintain our city, live within our general plan, adhere to our general plan. And so, we are working, once again, to implement some, introduce some objective standards and adopt them so that we can continue to, to zone with, or approve developments and approve plans that would be respectful to our community.
Okay. With, so, let's talk about some of those state laws that are impacting Los Altos. What is your position, pro or con, with respect to pending Senate housing bills, SB 1120 and SB 902?
Sadly, many of these new legislation are similar to what was in Senate Bill 50. And what is important for the public to understand is Senate Bill 1120 will greatly affect single-family residential zones. Both of the legislation that you have talked about today, 902, this, this, this really pivots to attack our voters and our rights. And many people have invested their life savings into their homes, and yet they've purchased into Los Altos because they, they really love the character and how our city is, you know, a suburban community. These laws are working to change suburban communities into urban, urban cities, and that's not what many have invested in. So personally, I am, I am not supportive of those legislation, and I think that we need to make sure that our representatives, our state representatives, as well as our governor, is aware of how we feel, and so I would encourage people to reach out to them.
Thank you very much. Let's go to a hot topic in the city of Los Altos and essentially across the nation. Are you in favor of defunding the Los Altos Police Department?
Thank you for asking that question. We had a police town hall on this. This is coming up on our agenda at our next council meeting, excuse me. This is coming up on our council meeting at our next, on the agenda on our next council meeting. So I am not taking a position. We are receiving a report that was drafted by the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, as well as some input from our police chief. And we are going to listen to the public and have the public weigh in on this. And so, we need a better understanding on, on, before we take positions, on what that defunding of our police department means. So at this moment, right now, I'm sorry, I cannot answer that. I think it's only respectful for me to gather all the information before making a decision at this time.
Of course. Thank you. And I, we totally understand your position as a, as a council member. Of course, that's the appropriate way for you to proceed. And sorry, sorry for asking you that question. Let's talk about resident focus. How would you define a resident-friendly candidate?
Resident-friendly candidate, as you see by your annual financial report that every household receives on an annual basis, there's a chart, there's a chart in there demonstrating where our residents stand. Our community is at the top of the chart. So I think as a resident-focused candidate, we have to understand who we're serving. And a resident-focused candidate will be mindful of that. I make, I know that a resident-focused candidate will also make themselves available to the community. They will make sure that our public is, has a good understanding as to what's coming on the agenda. They will make sure that outreach is important. And I think, as demonstrated by some of my actions, I feel that I have taken positions to make sure that I have advocated for more transparency, more outreach, and so I think it's in line with a resident-focused candidate.
Okay, thank you. And that segues also nicely into our next question. What will you do as an individual council member to keep current with the wants and needs of Los Altos voters?
Keep current in the sense of, well, when you say keep current, could you please clarify? Because I used, keep current, go ahead.
Yes, just what, what methods, what means will you employ to stay on top of knowing what Los Altos residents want or need?
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I have done continuous outreach, even as a community member, as an elected official. I also try to keep current because I attend a lot of forums, city events, regional events, and I take every opportunity to make myself available. I communicate openly with residents. I respond to residents who, you know, who reach out to me as well. We have city council open office hours. I feel that, you know, that's a good start, we can do better. I believe additional town halls would be good. And I would like to share that as a person who has implemented the senior program at Grand Park, continuing to remain an active volunteer allows me to also put myself in a position where I can be current on what their concerns and issues are. So I have also reached out to many of the community members. I have worked with one of our senior commissioners, Kristina Gao, who have made thousands and hundreds of masks for our seniors and our, you know, my, and community. Worked with her in distributing that. So I am making myself accessible, available to continue to receive input from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you satisfied with the level of transparency within Los Altos City Government? And if not, what would you do to improve it?
There is always room for how we can conduct business in relation to transparency. I know there are concerns regarding our website. I think that making sure that our website is updated so that it can be user-friendly. I myself have had some concerns with how to access and pull information from our website. I believe that our staff reports or how the positions taken on our staff reports could be done so with demonstrating two different approaches. As we learned from input from a recent appeal that came before us, a constituent stated how the report appeared biased by only having a resolution or ordinance stating only one side. I think having two approaches and clearly articulating the pros and cons of different positions that can be taken would be good. About approximately 10 years ago, I remember that agendas in the past used to do business that way, and perhaps, you know, we should revisit that. It's important to obtain continuous input from the public. So I noticed that other cities have continued to provide scientific surveys, collecting data from their community to get input on how they are doing. So best practices, such as Palo Alto, is an example that we can follow. Also, another example on, I believe, can be improved is how our agendas are written. Because sometimes it just is simple, three-word agenda topics. We need to clearly explain what that agenda item is. And I think it's very important that the description and having a clear explanation is, next to the agenda topic is important. So those are things that I feel has room for improvement regarding transparency and making sure that we, we do our best to, to make the public aware of what they, they can expect coming forward.
Okay, thank you so much, Lynette. Please describe what you believe should be the proper relationship between our city council and our city manager.
Our city council and manager relation is one of, well, I'm, is one that he understands that he is an employee, or we have to hold him accountable. We have to make sure that he understands what council priorities are, he adheres to it. We, and if there's not a clear understanding, we help him to understand or articulate what our direction he needs to go in. So we have two employees that the council is responsible for. It's the city manager as well as the city attorney, and both is the same expectation is that they are the employees that we are responsible for, and we hold accountable.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to hot topics. What is your position regarding the use of our city parks or the use of city-sponsored art for political purposes, political ends?
Our city ordinance are very clear. It, it also states, and it's a, our policy is a guiding position that we should have. And currently, our city ordinance says there should be no political messaging. We have the least amount of park space per capita in Los Altos, so we should keep our green space politic-free. I think many people attend our parks to recreate, to find an opportunity to relax, and, you know, it's just a simple pleasure that people want. And, you know, adhering to our policies and ordinance is really important. Until anything changes, we have some guidance there, and we should keep to that.
Great, thank you so much. What is your position regarding funding offers from private groups who want to alter a city park so to facilitate a particular activity that they favor, that the funding group favors? And in your mind, does it make any difference if the funding is partial or full?
Regarding funding offers or donations, I think it's important, as I said earlier, that if someone wants to make a donation, we really need to make sure that there are no strings attached. It is, we have to make sure we do good community outreach to understand where it lies within our priorities. And we have to understand that we have priorities that we have to adhere to. So funding offers or donations is clear that we, as a council, can make the best decision on the public, in which greater good it serves. So if there is a donation, there are good opportunities in which we can work together to, to see how it best serves the community. But ultimately, I think it's important that the public has an opportunity to weigh in.
So, I think you probably have already answered the question, but I, does it make any difference whether the group attaches conditions to their offer? How would that affect your decision?
We really have to understand what their, what their demands are. So until I get a clear understanding what the demands are, I really can't state a position. So, but I am concerned if there are, but I think sometimes, for example, there have been donations in the past where their contributions made and they want a plaque on something in downtown Los Altos. And we've, we've worked with it, with them. Like our Veterans Plaza is a good example on how we've worked with a nonprofit to make things happen for our community.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Last question. And maybe this is also something coming up in front of you, so I'm not sure if you can answer, but how do you feel about the, I'm just gonna ask you this one, not, not about the proposed reach codes, because I don't believe you can answer that since it's coming up to vote. But perhaps you can answer, perhaps you can answer this. How do you feel about the manner in which the environmental commission, the city staff and this, in certain members of the city council have moved this item along towards a scheduled vote next month? Is that something you can answer? It's the manner in which this item has been moved along?
Well, I, I did raise concerns about the lack of education, public education, the lack of pub, public outreach. So I utilize some of the, the practices in other cities that have been utilized to make the, our community members aware of what reach codes are and what, how they will be impacted. Cupertino, Palo Alto have been examples in where they've really gone out of their way to educate their community. I've raised that and I think that, that's why it's, it's been re, being allowed to be revisited at a later date. So I did, I did have raised my concerns about that and it is being addressed right now. So as far as it getting on the agenda, unfortunately, the mayor and the city manager control that and I am not in a position right now to, to have any control over the agenda.
Okay. Well, Lynette, that's the last of our questions, but I do wanna thank you so much. And I wanted to give you the opportunity to give a summary statement, tell, tell the voters what you would like to accomplish and just a capsule of your views and, so that you can leave with, leave them with your final thoughts.
Well, thank you. Once again, I'm running for reelection. I really think it's intend that people understand that if you're going to vote for someone, it's someone who will really listen to you with, I, I think I demonstrated that whenever I've been contacted, I've been pretty good at responding to individuals. Like others, I do work, so I try my best. Might not be able to get back to you in quite a way that you might want to within, but I try to do my best to respond within 24, 48 hours. So I do work for the people. I understand what the, what the concerns are. I recognize that we have a shortage of green space. I've worked to acquire or push that we have policies so that we can acquire more green space. I hear the people where they have concerns about our, the lack of our affordable housing. I've worked to, with our council to push for developments where we can have more affordable housing. I've advocated that BMRs, I mean, some of our, yes, BMRs in our new developments remain BMRs for perpetuity. So in, in order to maintain a higher level of housing and affordable housing, I've also worked with our state legislators in trying to have some reasonable and smart legislation. And I am there to protect our community and to protect its integrity and to protect its character and to protect the concerns of people's investments. So I would like to thank you for this time and giving me a few minutes to, to provide. So once again, I will work for our residents and I will work for people who are voting this election. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really do appreciate this opportunity to hear from you, Lynette. Thank you on behalf of all Los Altos residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So everyone can unmute their